Good morning, everyone. I'm John Paul, Chairman of the Power Authority Board, and pleased to welcome you to this joint meeting of the Authority and Canal's Board. Obviously, we're conducting our meeting again today via video conference as we're all in separate locations and appropriately socially distanced. With me today is my fellow trustees, Nakandry McKibben, Trainer and Balboni. Trustee Pacente was unable to join and has otherwise been excused. The meeting has been duly noticed, as is typically the case, and as a result, I'm pleased to now convene and call the order. We've all been provided in advance with materials, including our agenda for today. Unless there's any questions or comments, I'd ask for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Come on.
Thank you. Motion and a second included there. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. The agenda's been adopted. As we will customarily do rather, we will start the meeting in executive session, and therefore, I'd ask for a motion to do so pursuant to section 105 of the Public Officers' Law.
Come on.
Second.
A second. Thank you very much, Judge and Mike. All in favor, aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. We will adjourn to executive session and be back with you within no more than the next hour. Thank you very much. Talk again shortly. Welcome back. If we could restart by asking for a motion to resume our meeting in open seconds.
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
Appreciate the second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, and as always, no votes were taken during executive session. Again, we were pulled as we are opening it regarding conflicts. We've submitted our responses there to an advance of the session. I'm assuming no one has any other additions or concerns relative to potential conflicts? All right. I'm still getting a lot of feedback. Not sure what can be done with that.
Chairman, if those who are not speaking could just mute yourselves, that would eliminate...
They can't hear you.
Yeah, for those who are not speaking, if you could just mute yourselves, that would eliminate the feedback. So when you're not speaking, just mute yourself. Thank you.
Well, okay. All right. We'll jumpstart our dialogue and discussion. Gil, lead us off, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, trustees, management staff, and later on, the public who will be watching this video. In my... I'm going to cover three items in my report today. The first one will be the status of NAIPA in this COVID response. Number two, our response to the racial justice issue and the commitments and investments that we are going to make in that very important area. And the last one is a presentation about transmission. NAIPA is the owner and operator of one-third of the transmission system in our state. And in the last budget of the governor, there was legislation that expanded our authority to play a bigger role in integrating large-scale renewables into the power system to achieve our goals set forth in the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. So let me begin with the state of NAIPA's COVID response. If you recall, we started with... We stood up an emergency operations center using the ICS process back in March. We now have pivoted to a task force format because much of the day-to-day activities as we have been returning to work have been assigned to the business units. We continue to do many of the best practices as we return to work. We do health checks at all of our facilities. We're getting ready just in case there are hotspots or clusters that may come up, just like what's going on in other states. We are working with the various emergency management agencies and Department of Health at the state level. We did testing. We offered testing to our employees at all of our facilities, both for antibody and diagnostic testing. And as we return to work, we're retrofitting our air handling system and our HVAC system, putting high-efficiency filters that are used in hospitals, as well as UV-C lighting, ultraviolet lighting, LED lighting that disinfects the air in our workplaces. Again, all to mitigate the risk of spread and transmission. In terms of the return to work, you will see in this chart that we are moving really well in terms of unpausing our capital and major O&amp;M projects. You'll see that on the dials on the right side of this chart, that we are moving to and restarting many of our projects. On the bar charts on the left side, this basically tells you in summary that we should be able, even though we lost three months, three-plus months of time, that we should be able to implement at least two-thirds of our capital program this year. And the balance will be carried over forward, and you will see that in our budget for next year and in future years. So that's the state of NAIPA. Now, in terms of our response to the racial justice...
Gil, let's say, Gil?
Question.
Can you just pause there for a moment before we move forward? So you said we're three months down, simple math. So we lost a quarter in time, and you said we're going to catch up to two-thirds. So the differential between only losing a quarter of time and a third of productivity is just due to the inherent inefficiencies in rebooting and our ability to take things back online? That's just the nature of the new order and the new normal?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. You know, when we restart a big capital program, there's a lot of remobilization that we need to do, not only of our own staff, but of our contractors and vendors and partners. So restarting, remobilizing requires time. And so it's just really a matter of that, plus the normal schedule that you do work as you plan them out. But I think I'm very pleased to report to you that even though we abruptly stopped in March, and now that we are in the restarting mode, that I believe that, all things considered, our team has been performing really well in doing so.
All right. Super. Secondly, as we look ahead, how much better prepared are we today than we were six months ago for the inevitable, as you say, second wave, next wave, continuation of the first wave, whatever may be inflicted upon us? Help me from your seat, how much better positioned we are? Obviously, we were well-positioned six months ago, but I'm assuming we've taken that to even better and higher levels as we look ahead to the inevitable?
Absolutely. I think that we are much better prepared now because we know how to deal with any flare-ups if there could be... If there will be infections at any of our facilities, we have the testing in place. We have employees who are trained in contact tracing to minimize the spread. We know we have the technology to deploy if we need to go back again to some level of work-from-home posture. So we can move much, much faster, and we will be more agile in responding to any potential risks that may come up between now and the end of the year.
And we haven't... Have we experienced any unanticipated attrition as people have looked ahead and weighed the pros and cons, risks and rewards of the new normal and the new environment? Has the team held up pretty well, or do you see some talent gaps arising?
Well, I think the team has held up really well. We have normal retirements that were planned anyway. I don't know of any employee who left just because of the COVID situation. I would say it's the contrary. A lot of our employees have been showing great initiative in leaning in and trying to help in whatever way they can to deal with this emergency where critical infrastructure, providing and distributing electricity. And I believe that every employee really has taken that to heart. Our Canal's employees are working really hard to reopen the canals. They've done a great job under the circumstances where their work literally was stopped in the middle of their work. They literally had to stop with everything out open in the canal system. So I think we're in good shape. We are... We don't have immediate talent gaps. I think we have that covered. I anticipate at some point in time, we will continue to build a team as we not only deal with the new normal, but also execute our strategy.
Okay, great. Any other board members' questions for Gil as to where we stand relative to the COVID response and the look ahead? All right. Great. Thanks, Gil.
Thank you. I am now going to move to our company's response to the racial justice issue. But before I do that, I'd like to let you know that we have been joined by Paula Glover. Paula is the president and CEO of the American Association of Blacks in Energy. Let me give you a little bit of intro on who she is. She is an industry thought leader for issues around diversity and inclusion. Under Ms. Glover's leadership, Abe partnered with the U.S. Department of Energy on its Minorities in Energy Initiative. She has also testified before Congress about the impact of policies on underserved communities. Paula has more than 25 years of experience in the energy industry, where she has worked in government affairs, regulatory affairs, and economic development. In March 2014, Ms. Glover was appointed to the National Petroleum Council by U.S. Secretary of Energy Dr. Ernie Moniz. In June of 2017, she was voted onto the Board of Directors for the Alliance to Save Energy. Paula is also a member of the Advisory Board for the Maryland Energy and Sustainability Center at the University of Maryland Eastern Shore. She received her BS in Marketing Management from the University of Delaware, and she's a graduate of Leadership New Haven and has contributed articles on work-life balance in Take Pride magazine. She will be partnering with us and her organization, and I'll talk more about that. I present our response to the racial justice and equity issue. As you know, after the killing of George Floyd, I sent a message to all of our employees. I spoke to you, our board, and also had an all-hands meeting of all the employees of NAIPA and Canal's to listen and to eventually figure out concrete... Develop a concrete response to this very, very important issue, not just at NAIPA, but throughout our society. The reason why we're focusing on addressing the issues of the Black community, it's not really only because of what happened to George Floyd. If you look at all relevant metrics about the Black community, whether you're talking about wealth creation over a long period of time, as you can see in this chart, or about mobility, upward mobility, the data is so stark and sobering that Blacks have really been left behind. And in this presentation, I'm not going to go over all of the charts, but in the appendix, you will see charts that we have obtained from the Washington Post and one of the articles that they published earlier in June, and also from McKinsey, the global consulting company who did a lot of work in this area. But it's very, very clear that the facts are just that whether we're talking about wealth or mobility or educational attainment, et cetera, have been so stark for the Black community. On top of that, as we go through the COVID crisis, if you look at the ZIP codes in New York State on where the majority of the cases have been, on where the majority of the deaths occurred, they are in communities of color because they are largely our first responders or essential workers, or they are in situations where it's hard to social distance, or most of them have also pre-existing underlying illness and condition. So all of that contributed to the disproportionate impact of COVID in communities of color. The... As I've said, the killing of George Floyd was not really the isolated accident... Isolated incident. It really... If you, at least in my lifetime, it probably started with Rodney King and everybody in between up to the killing of George Floyd. And it speaks to that systemic racism in our society. And this is the reason why today, this presentation, we're calling it diversity, equity, and inclusion, but it's focused on the Black community because of this set of facts. Now, does that say that, you know, we care less about Latinos and Hispanics and other races, or women, or veterans? Of course not. They are all part of our diversity, equity, and inclusion program, and we will address those issues, and we will talk to you and report to you the commitments and the actions that we will make in those areas as well. Does it also mean that, you know, we are anti-law enforcement? No. We believe that the vast majority of law enforcement are honest and are keeping the peace in our community. Or does it mean that we're anti-white? No, we're not. You know, at NAIPA, what we are about is we would like to give the same opportunity to everybody, and that we would like to treat everybody the same way. But because of the gravity, because of the data and the facts about the Black community and our Black employees, and because of this moment in time that provides us an opportunity to address these issues now that we are seizing the moment and taking this opportunity to do so. So a quick next slide here, a quick showing of our demographic. As you can see, we have some work to do. And... But, you know, it is always... We've always said at NAIPA that it's good if NAIPA is reflective of the communities it serves. So this is a goal that we will try and achieve and put our commitment going forward. As I've said, we're not just doing this today. We've had a very robust diversity, equity, and inclusion program here at NAIPA led by Nancy Harvey and company, and we have been... We have ERGs, we have a training, we do it in recruitment, but we can do more. And that's what I would like to propose to you, our board, on what we are planning to work on and committing to between now and September and beyond. So let me go over our commitments. Let me start with the internal commitments that we are making. We want to reaffirm NAIPA's commitment to building and maintaining a diverse, equitable, and inclusive culture, and integrate that in our corporate values and the creation of NAIPA 2030, which is the strategy that we will submit to you by the end of this year. We want to ensure that our processes, policies, and procedures, we just... We are in the process of reviewing all of our policies and procedures now and make sure that they're transparent and free from bias. We want to expand the ongoing training that we already have here at NAIPA on anti-racism and conscious bias, microaggression, and cultural competency. We are going to create a Chief Diversity, Inclusion, and Equity Officer, reporting to me and reporting to Christine Pizzo, our Head of Human Resources and Chief Administration Officer. We want to invest more in the Black employees that we already have here at NAIPA and make sure that they have ways to develop their career and their upward mobility in our organization. We want to cast a wider net and make sure that we have diverse slates of candidates before we commence interviewing for openings here at the Power Authority. We want to partner with our unions to make sure that we are in alignment and we support their own diversity, equity, and inclusion programs. On the external-facing side, we want to leverage our experience and resources and our purchasing power to increase the capacity of the MWBE firms that we are already working with, and again, cast a wider net and bring more MWBE firms that can do business with us. And we would like to broaden our community-based STEM program. We do that already through our environmental justice and sustainability programs under the leadership of Lisa Wansley. And start thinking about building the pipeline of potential employees, not just to NAIPA and our partners, but in the utility sector in general, through internship, through mentorship, and through a targeted scholarship program. And we're going to, again, put the details on those between now and then in September, and then work on them thereafter. And this... The last one that we want to make a commitment on, on an external basis, is to create an enterprise-wide employee service program. What I mean by that is that NAIPA's employees should set aside certain time in the year to volunteer, to work with environmental justice communities, especially those that are near to our facilities, and through our projects and programs, for example, community solar programs, energy efficiency-type programs, lend their time and expertise to those communities. So we're going to do that in a more structured and formal way. We have a small program of that sort today, but we really want to expand that. So these are the 10 initial commitments that we are making here at the New York Power Authority. What we will do also today, what I'd like to propose to the board, is we are going to commit to double our investments in diversity, equity, and inclusion programs, MWBE programs, environmental justice programs, from $5 million to $10 million to increase the capacity of those organizations so that it can do more and it can really be a leader in our industry as we respond to this important crisis that we have and this important goal and aspiration that we are making here at the Power Authority. With that, I'd like to ask Paula Glover, the president of the American Association of Blacks in Energy, to just tell us a little bit about her organization and what they're doing with their own initiative to galvanize the entire industry and corporations in our industry, and also the partnership that we have forged with her, starting today, as we develop more specific desired outcomes and deliverables that we want to submit to you, our board, in September, and then jointly work together to implement those going forward. Paula?
Good morning. Thank you so much, Gil, for that introduction, and thank you to the board for including me and allowing me to just share a couple of thoughts with you about kind of how we, as an organization, see moving forward in this moment in time. I prepared a very short presentation, so I don't expect to take a lot of your time and any questions you have, I'm happy to answer. Next slide, please. I wanted to share with you first a little about us as an organization. The association is a 43-year-old organization, and you see up in front of you kind of what our mission is. We have over 2,000 members nationwide, 38 chapters in 28 states, as well as a district of Columbia. My membership works in every single sector of the energy industry. So we have a lot of folks in utilities, as well as, you know, oil and natural gas upstream, midstream, downstream, renewable developers, and as well as those who work in renewable companies, companies that focus on renewable distributed generation. We also have, you know, policymakers and the like. And our organization is really founded first to ensure that energy policy does not disproportionately impact communities of color. What we know today is that across income dociles, African-Americans and Hispanics do pay more for their energy than their Caucasian counterparts. And so we, as an organization, want to make sure that as policymakers are looking at policies, they are looking at the entire plethora of impacts so that we make smart decisions. Next slide, please. So what we've decided, right after, quite frankly, not right after, but several weeks after the murder of George Floyd, the association issued a statement, and we wanted to have something that we thought would be thoughtful, but also kind of help us think about as an industry, what is a path forward? And our goal really was, and is, greater representation of African-Americans in employment, leadership, business contracting, workforce development in this industry. Next slide, please. That said, we believe there are five actions that need to take place that need to achieve success, and we understand that not every company is in the same place. Some companies are well along this path through their own DEI programs. Other organizations may just be getting started, but we wanted to give folks a sense of where we think and believe as an association, the areas where we need to look at. And the first really is really working on looking at our organizations internally and ensuring that we do have an inclusive environment where employees feel valued. I'm a strong believer in organizational culture and corporate culture, and I think that for companies who are starting to do diversity, equity, inclusion, or those who have already started, ensuring that the corporate culture is representative of an inclusive environment is important before you do recruiting or anything else. We also believe, though, that organizations should have a focused effort on increasing the representation of African-Americans in their employment, and then developing a pathway for leadership, as we would with any other employee. And because we... And we believe that those need to be specific types of programs because, as you saw in the first slides that Gil presented, that there is a great deal of underrepresentation. We believe that companies should quit to... Commit to an equitable spend with African-American-owned businesses, particularly those who are already doing business with us or are ready to do business with our industry. But in addition to that, we also believe that it's important to invest in capacity building for African-American and small businesses who would like to do business with our industry. As you all know, this is an industry that's incredibly complex, and for a lot of entrepreneurs, while they have a lot of value that they can provide, it's very hard... It's a hard industry for folks to navigate and to understand where the product or service that they offer fits into the... into the supply and value chain of our organizations. And so we think that investing in the capacity-building of African-American-owned businesses will better prepare them to do business in our industry, but also then helps to create wealth and some of the other economic factors that we see our communities lagging in. And finally, we think that companies should direct their resources to support African-American students. And what we mean by that goes beyond just scholarship programs. We, as an organization, have a scholarship program for students who are interested in STEM and want to work in the energy business. And as an organization nationwide, we give out about a quarter of a million dollars every single year on scholarship, in scholarship money. But with that, we still have a lot of those same students who don't have opportunities to actually get in the industry. They're not tapped into internship programs or co-op programs, externship programs. And what we're asking companies to do is to use the same level of focus that they do when they want to have a diverse slate of candidates for any open positioning, that that same type of focus needs to be for our internship programs and other programs that really are the starting point for careers for a lot of our students, particularly engineers and others. Next slide, please. So what we've been asking companies and trade associations to do is to join this energy equity campaign. And what we're saying is that, you know, we can lead by doing more. What the campaign is designed to do is really to be an industry-wide response. So as opposed to something that may just focus on EDCs, electric distribution companies, or gas distribution companies, something that just may focus on pipeline companies, we believe, as an organization, that this is the kind of thing that we, as a whole energy industry, can get behind and work together. And so we're asking organizations to join this initiative and campaign, and by doing that, what they are saying is, A, that they support these key actions. Now, supporting the key actions doesn't necessarily mean that every company is going to do something in all of those five buckets that I outlined in the previous slide, but it does suggest that we all share the same ideals and that we do believe this is the right path forward. We are asking those organizations to also partner with programs that demonstrate action. Those could be programs that we have, the association have established. Our Center for Economic Opportunity is really focused on small business development, and we have a Leadership Professional Development Program that's focused on building pipeline, how do you manage diversity, efficacy in the workplace, and the like. But the point is not necessarily for companies to support our programs, although I would like them to. It is for companies to find the programs that fit with what their goals are and to support those programs in the long run. And understand that our commitments are long-term. They are not six-month, one-year, five-year commitments, because this problem is going to take time. We need to be focused and patient, but we do need to, I think, make those kinds of commitments and a long-term plan, something that organizations can say, this is what I'm doing, and not so that the association, or myself, or anyone, is now going to hold organizations accountable. But it is a way for organizations to hold themselves accountable to these ideas and these goals. Next slide, please. And so how we, as an organization, for those who decide to partner with us, and we're so excited and thrilled that NAIPA and Gil, you are the very first organization to support this initiative, how we want to help is first to be able to help companies to be successful. And ways that we can do that is, for example, Gil outlined in some of the goals for NAIPA, the ability to broaden the pool for every search. Well, we have a jobs board, we have 2,000 members, and we want to be able to help and support in doing that. We want to be able to convene meetings so that leaders can learn from one another. Part of, I think, the struggle always is, when you're talking about racial justice or equity issues in general, is creating a space where leaders can have very frank and honest discussions about what their own challenges are, and then learn from other leaders of potential solutions or things that have worked and things that may not have worked. And so we want to be able to convene, and we plan to convene meetings that allow folks to get together and have those kinds of conversations. And then we are going to also supplement and facilitate some of this engagement by offering subject matter experts within our association and other partners that we work with, work with, who can then help work through that transition. Next slide, and I believe this may be my last slide. And so, you know, at the end of the day, we do think that if we're going to eradicate inequity, that allows us to build goodwill, it absolutely improves your brand value, but quite frankly, it's going to help our organizations achieve better business results. And so the process is for phase-right discovery, understanding where we are, planning, putting a plan in place to lessen the gaps that we all see happening or occurring in our individual organizations, executing on those plans, and then reporting out on what I know will be a lot of success. And so with that, I want to say, you know, thank you, first of all, Gil and to NAIPA for supporting the association and for joining us on what I think is going to be a really critical and important journey, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
So that's the, that's, thank you, Paula, and thank you to your leadership. It's been, you know, steady and firm leadership in this area. As, you know, we look forward to partnering with you and your organization, we look forward to working with you as we put together a plan and really outline the desired outcomes that we will bring back to our board in September. We're going to tell them exactly what are the metrics, what are the desired outcomes, how are we going to measure our progress, what investments are we going to make. Today, we initially were announcing that we believe that we can double, we can double our investments in our diversity, equity, and inclusion program, in our MWBE program. Obviously, we spend more in MWBE, but just investing in the capacity of that group, as well as our environmental justice program, from $5 million to $10 million. But we will bring, working with you and your team, we will bring more of the details to our board in September. And as you've rightfully noted, this is a long-term commitment for NAIPA, and with the support of our board, who, really, our board has been, has been great in supporting us every step of the way in this journey.
Gil, I have a question.
Let me stop, let me stop there.
Gil, I have a question for Paula. My, it's unscientific, but my experience or observation has always been, it wasn't how smart you were or how talented you were, but who you knew that got you job, got you a job. And it seems to me the big hurdle, and whether your program is going to deal with this, is how do you deal with the networking system that exists, you know, in every, whether it's legal, or medical, or accounting, or any union membership, or anything? It's, you know, well, your father was in the lawyer, therefore you got first shot at a job, or, you know, your father was in the union, and your father was a policeman, or your father was a fireman, or your uncle was. And it's the networking, it always seemed to me, that was the entryway into the job market. And, you know, how do you deal with that in going forward when trying to make this as a diversified-as-possible organization?
So thank you for that question. I will tell you that I absolutely agree with you, that a lot of it, if not 90% of it, is the networking. And I think the challenge that we have as an industry is, quite frankly, the fact that we don't want to acknowledge that that exists. We have a narrative out there that talks a lot about a meritocracy, as if the networking has no value, when in fact, in many cases, the way we hire is absolutely about the networking. And so part of what we want to do is, one, help companies to expand their network of people that they are reaching out to. But also, I think, there has to, when we talk about these kinds of convenings of leaders, is having an honest conversation about how people actually navigate in our industry, and then really thinking about how do we shift that, shift that in a way that makes it meaningful. Many times, many, many times, I'll get phone calls about, do you know someone who's African-American who can do X, Y, Z? So what we see is that there are companies who are definitely being far more directed about looking for diverse hires, but if the only way that they get them is by calling me, that's a failure from the start, because I can't be the only resource that people are looking to. And so part of what we want this program to do is to allow us to collectively think about how we shift some of that focus, broaden our networks, and just do this work better.
Good, Mr. Chair. Just because the trustee, McAndry's question leads right into what I think is so important for all of us to keep in mind, and I'm so excited about the commitment that NAIPA is making and sort of focusing on its core. It has been a leader in so many areas and is now taking on a leadership role here, as you focus both, as Gil laid out internally, on, you know, how do we keep and retain our employees that we already have, how do we expand the outreach in our recruiting and diversifying that, and then also looking out outside in our relationships with our supply chain, as well as how we're giving out in the community. And so looking at those areas and committing to doing more, I think, is so important. And then, you know, as we look internally, tied to the trustee McAndry's question, you know, establishing those mentorship relationships, I think, will be so important. And again, I just wanted to say I'm excited about the commitment that the organization has made, and I look forward, as a trustee, as evaluating how we're measuring up to those commitments and having further discussions about what those are in more detail. So very excited. So thanks.
And I can only echo what's been said, Gil. We're a proud organization and proud of who we are and what we represent, and this is a time when, as I'm prone to say, we need to lean in and really lead, and that starts by acknowledging that we need to be better. And in this situation, we need to be much better, however good we think we've been. We haven't been remotely good enough, and we need to be better. So kudos for setting the table well. I'm really excited about the collaboration with Paula and her association. I'm less excited that we're the first one. I'm concerned we're the only one at this point, but hopefully, our stepping up will enable her to leverage our commitment to broaden the reach across the industry. So I know as a board, you have our full support. We're, our commitment, well, unstated and understated will be much going forward, and we look forward to hearing more in the months ahead and between now and September, when you further formalize your thoughts and thinking.
Any more questions or comments on that topic?
Good start, Gil. Really appreciate it. Thank you very much. You're leading the way.
Thank you very much, trustee trainer. Okay, hearing none, we'll pivot to an important topic.
And a final thank you to Paula for her time this morning and her partnership and collaboration with us. So we look forward to working with you, Paula, and continuing the dialogue.
Thank you so very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Paula, once again. Okay, we'll move on to the third item, third part of my presentation, and I'm going to ask the help of Kim Harriman and Girish to present to you an emerging strategic initiative here at the Power Authority about transmission. Kim?
Sure. Thank you, Gil, and good morning, chairmen and trustees. We can go to the next slide. This morning, I'm going to talk to you about the Accelerated Renewable Energy Growth Community Benefits Act. It's a mouthful for an acronym, so I won't even try to pronounce it as an acronym. This act was passed as part of the budget this year, and it was introduced and spearheaded by Governor Cuomo. It's really designed to provide the state the tools it needs to comply with the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, known as CLCPA. The CLCPA requires New York to achieve 70% of its consumed energy from renewable resources by 2030, as well as 100% from emissions-free resources by 2040, among other things. What the state realized through the leadership of the governor is that those goals cannot be achieved unless we have, first, accelerated renewable energy citing, and, second, a way in which to move that renewable energy from the places it's generated to where it is consumed. The act itself does three things. It accelerates the renewable energy project citing by creation of an Office of Renewable Energy Citing. This office will be housed within the Department of State and has the provisions within the statute and ultimately regulations to quickly and efficiently cite renewable energy projects while being mindful of both environment and community impacts. The second part of the act creates a Build Ready Program. This program is going to be administered by NISERTA, and it focuses on identifying areas in the state with community engagement and support that are ripe for development, focusing primarily on underutilized or brownfield areas for development of either wind or solar renewable generation projects. The third part of the act focuses on what we call a grid study. And what folks realize is, we can build all the renewable generation we want in New York to achieve our 70 by 30 or 100 by 40 goals, but unless we upgrade the energy delivery system from, to ensure we get this energy from the places it's generated to it's consumed, we're not going to hit those goals. I'm going to focus primarily on the grid study piece. Provision in the act requires that a grid study be done and investment plan be created. And the grid study focuses on two primary things. One, I like to think about this as in terms of roads, right? You have what I would call your street outside your house or your apartment, and then you have state and county highways, and then you have interstates. And when we look at it, we look at local transmission and distribution systems as being the road outside your building or your house and the highway for the county and the state level. These are important assets because they often are the first touchpoint in either renewable generation projects, interconnection to the system, or a customer-sited renewable generation project. And so the study's going to look, with the assistance of all the investor-owned utilities, NAIPA, the Long Island Power Authority, NISERTA, as well as Department of Public Service, who's leading this effort, to determine what upgrades are necessary to this local transmission and distribution system that will help facilitate achievement of CLCPA. In particular, for NAIPA, this is an important issue, as we work with energy services and solutions to identify customer-sited generation projects that may be bottled or incapable of interconnecting due to constraints on the distribution and the local transmission system. The second piece of the grid study looks at the bulk electric system. We like to refer to this as the highway, the interstate highway. And in New York, as Gil mentioned earlier, NAIPA owns a third of that backbone highway. The study is designed to analyze what we believe is going to be generated or constructed and operated both from an onshore capability, so that's wind and solar, as well as offshore resources. The state has a 9 gigawatt offshore wind target in the CLCPA, and NISERTA's issued most recently its second round of solicitations for those projects. It's important that when we build these projects, we understand how they can be interconnected to the system in a way that ensures efficient delivery and reliability of the network. There's two tools that have been identified by the act and recognized to ensure these transmission system upgrades are built. The first is what we call an Order 1000 Public Policy Transmission Needs. This is a policy that was issued by FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, and it identifies and provides the tools for our New York ISO, which is the Independent System Operator in New York, to identify needed upgrades to the system, conduct an RFP to determine the best solutions for those upgrades, and ensure cost recovery of those projects. The second- The second part of the act identified NIPA being the third of the backbone owner and operator and a public entity as a vehicle in which certain transmission projects that are absolutely needed and needed to be done in an expedited fashion, that NIPA could, based upon advice and consent and agreement by the trustees, pursue construction of these activities. Both the local transmission and distribution upgrades, as well as the bulk system, is going to be compiled into one grid study that will be filed with the commission by the end of this year. And in each of those instances, specific projects or needs will be identified and investment plans will be created. The commission will also, when looking at the bulk study, determine what projects need to be done at the bulk level on an expedited basis, and will ask NIPA to undertake those projects. To the extent that the project is solely within the right-of-way of NIPA, NIPA will proceed on its own. If the projects involve areas outside of NIPA's right-of-way, NIPA, under the act, is required to competitively solicit partners and will do so, again, with the advice and consent of the trustees. While the act contemplates the study being filed by the end of the year, it also permits, as you will hear from Girish Bell, that there can be needs that are identified in advance of that end-of-the-year filing. And in fact, two such needs have been identified. And the needs that Girish is going to go over represent needs that have been longstanding identified, and both through Order 1000 process, in which case the need was not taken up for addressment under Order 1000, and have been recognized in multiple other system plans and studies that the New York Independent System Operator has performed. So that's the background on the act, and I'm going to turn it over to Girish to talk to you specifically about these two projects that NIPA has recently identified and submitted to the commission for consideration as designated priority transmission projects.
Thank you, Kim and Gil. Good morning, trustees, staff, and public. The first project that we have identified as a priority project is Northern New York Transmission Project. And it has several components to it. One major component, or one part of the component, is the completion of the SmartPath project, the MA1 and MA2 rebuild. There's part of those projects that will be completed as part of Northern New York. We will be also looking to modify Moses to Willis lines, Willis to Patnote lines, and subsequently the Ederondic to Porter lines that are currently owned by National Grid. This project will enable roughly, we estimate, about 3,000 megawatts of new renewable interconnections in this entire region. And it basically take advantage of the upgrades that are being done under the previous projects that have been approved under PPTN processes or FERC 1000 processes, and are currently in final stages of, I would say, permitting and getting slowly into construction towards the next year. Next slide, please. Couple of things to be highlighted. This project primarily sits within the NIPA and National Grid right-of-ways. There is current curtailment of some of the wind renewables up in the north, and what we expect is those curtailments to increase as more renewables are added to the grid. And this project will enable reduction of those curtailments and move the power from the northern portions of New York down to Utica and further to the lower part of the Next slide, please. On the Western New York projects, we have proposed two different components. One is a Packard-Huntley-Gardenwell circuit separation, and the other is the South Ripley Par. The expectation is that the upgrades with Huntley-Gardenwell circuits will increase the overall capacity of the system to transfer renewables and Niagara generation and any of the other imports that may happen from Ontario, further strengthening, you know, the transfer capability of that whole area into the larger New York grid. And the South Ripley Par is a project that is proposed to help manage some of the flows between the New York Independent System Operator control area to the PJM control area, essentially, you know, trying to push and keeping more renewables within the New York control area. Next slide, please. Again, both projects are substantially within existing right-of-ways or National Grid and Avon Grid, and we are looking to, this would enable roughly 600 megawatts of new renewable investments, and it also leverages the Western New York PPTN that was recently awarded to Nextera. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for Kim or Girish?
All right, thank you. So if I can just say, so you'll hear more and more from us about our investments in transmission, and we'll articulate it more completely when we submit our NIPA 2020 strategy by the end of this year. But that's the end of my report, and we can now move on to the reports of operations and commercial operations and then our financial report.
Joe, Sarah, and Adam will make other presentations to us. Joe, you're up first, please.
Thank you, Chairman Colmell, the trustees, Gil, staff. We're all green, so we're very fortunate that the generator market readiness and transmission system reliability are green. Recalling that transmission reliability does include our scheduled outages, so that's all going very well. We've also done very well from an environmental and a DART rate. We are actually at zero for a DART rate through June. We are getting ramped up on work. We don't have any illusions that wrapping up the work and providing our, the work that we're doing there, that those will be sustained, but of course, we will endeavor to do that. But nothing further in detail to report unless there's any other questions. Going well. We are, and hopefully, we can stay in the green in all areas as we do that.
Well done. A unique report. I don't know if we've ever seen it all green, let alone a zero. So well done. Enjoy the moment. Kudos.
We're very proud of it, so we'll do our best to sustain it.
All right. Sir, any questions for Joe? As Gil mentioned before, coming back online in a strong way, so kudos to you and the team for doing so. All right, Sarah.
Thank you. Great, good morning, trustees, public, and my colleagues. Just wanted to give you a quick update and recap of the responsiveness of NIPA within the commercial operations team during COVID. As you know, we monitored closely the customer loads during COVID. At the peak, we were 18% below what we would otherwise have anticipated during the year, particularly within New York City entities such as the MTA that had ridership down. However, what is positive is that year-to-date, really, we've only seen about a 6.5% decline overall in our customer load, and we are anticipating and speaking with our customers that the end-of-year forecast will have us reaching back up to about 2% below what would otherwise be weather-normalized. So that's very positive, hopefully, for the economy, but as, again, as we all know, it's a very uncertain time, and we can only do our best relative to what we hear from our customers and monitor in the New York. Secondly, developed an economic development customer assistance program, which enabled our customers that were interested to defer their bill payments for six months, both interest and penalty free, and we had a very robust subscription for that with about 44%. Many of the other customers, as articulated previously, were deemed essential, so they maintained their load, or they took advantage of the paycheck protection program that was supported by the federal government. You'll see here a picture of Manifold Center. They are a metal casting company, and actually during COVID, were responsive in supporting the production of equipment for ventilators. Next slide. We've had a lot of lessons learned relative to COVID. You heard from Larry Mallory, some of the efforts, as well as from Casey, of working remotely through all of our digital technologies. What we found is that we were able to continue to work relatively efficiently, even on our larger-scale energy efficiency projects by doing virtual site walk downs and preparation for bids, and ultimately saw a reduction in wear and tear on our staff time and travel, and so believe that we'll be able to capitalize on that going forward, while still recognizing the importance of face-to-face interaction, both with our customers and with our contractors. Along with the rest of NIPA, we paused all of the O&M and CapEx when the crisis hit, both for cash preservation, as has been articulated previously by our CFO, as well as to support the reduction in spread of the virus. To that end, we've worked very closely with the incident command structure and restarted over 120 projects across our portfolio, which includes energy efficiency, electric vehicle charging, and then some of the solar plus storage at our various customer sites. And then finally, when it comes to the wholesale margin, which Adam will also touch on, we did see a significant reduction in energy prices when the pandemic hit, with reduction of about 25% to 40%, which had a significant impact on our profit and loss statement. However, we've been actively working towards hedging, both in the near-term year and the rest of year, as well as outside of it, and believe that we have limited our exposure for the rest of the year to about $15 million. Next slide. This goes into a little bit more detail on our wholesale electricity supplies. You can see it's red because we are below what we budgeted, and again, Adam will talk a little bit more detail. But fundamentally, gas supplies are up, and that has had an impact on the gas prices that have been below $2, and gas sets the marginal unit of energy production and therefore squeezes margins in the wholesale market overall. So supply is up in that sense. We've also seen the reduction in load. The NISO saw about a 7% to 10% decrease in load across the state. That is now being reduced in the rest of the year to about 3% to 5%. And as I articulated, our customers, in terms of our communication with them, have articulated a potential 52% reduction compared to what we would otherwise expect. So we do see the remainder of the year staying consistent, both on a price point relative to the energy prices, as well as stabilizing on the load. Next slide. NIPA always articulates that we're customer-centric, and one of the ways that we chose to do that was to introduce third-party benchmarking relative to customer satisfaction. So we worked with J.D. Powers Associates and developed a customer satisfaction survey that had both proprietary questions for the various products and services that NIPA provides, but also enabled us to benchmark with utilities across the country to determine exactly where we fall, so we can strive in the next couple of years to be both above utility average and top decile. And this is the first example and first sharing with you of the survey results. On economic development, this is led with great success under Keith Hayes, along with Rich Smith, and we do continue to support the economic development of the state with the traction and retention of jobs, as well as the capital commitments. And needless to say, we wouldn't be able to do any of this if we didn't have the strength in our asset management, particularly for our hydro assets under Joe Kessler's leadership. Next slide.
Sarah, before you, I'm surprised that our customer satisfaction score is below an industry average. Talk a little bit about your thoughts on that, your perspective on that, what decile that places us in versus our aspirational expectation of a top-decile performer. Give us some context here, please.
Yeah, well, I think that, you know, what's encouraging to me is that you manage what you measure, and I think you see across NIPA that we are putting metrics in place to be transparent and know exactly where we are. I think that a large part of the results that came from this initial survey was really around communication and working with J.D. Powers and looking very specifically at the different sub-elements of it. A lot of it had to do with some of our customers not necessarily having a broader perspective on NIPA and understanding all of the other work that we're doing. So I feel that we will be able to get a significant increase just through increasing our communications. And to that end, we set up a marketing and product development group in the last half year, and a big focus on that is improving our more systematic communication with our customer base. But there's, needless to say, no silver bullet, but I believe that in all of the different areas, that we'll see improvement over time.
Do we survey on a continuous basis or just periodically?
So in setting up the initial baseline, we're doing it on a quarterly basis to get to a statistically significant sample. After that, anticipate we would just be doing it on an annual basis, because our customer mix is not, our customer base isn't huge, and so we don't want to have the survey fatigue that we might otherwise have. It's very different if you're looking at residential consumers. We have millions, say, of customers.
Maybe you can share a little more of your action plan with us there, since, as I said, I'm just surprised we're below average. I think none of us would have suggested that would be likely.
Yeah, no, happy to provide a more detailed briefing to the board on that.
Okay.
The commercial ops team has a big portfolio, and this is really a debut of the new CCO report. It was something that had been developed earlier in this year, but then COVID hit, so we haven't had an opportunity to share it with you. But really, it's looking at sharing the key metrics and the key drivers of the particular business lines. Clean Energy Solutions represents our traditional energy efficiency projects, which is the $300 million approximate capital portfolio. We stopped all of our construction due to COVID, and therefore, the yellow ranking is as a result of the four-month pause on some of the construction. We don't realize our revenues until we meet certain construction milestones, and so this is really a timing issue as opposed to a fundamental P&amp;L or operating expense management issue. On New York Energy Manager, our New York Energy Manager is our energy information platform. It is meant to support managing demand, supporting decarbonization, and optimizing energy usage. A platform is only as good as the data that you have, and the more data that you have, the more analytics that can help drive better energy decisions. And to that end, we're on track for the number of data records that we would like to have in the New York Energy Manager platform. Along those lines, just as a recap, the New York Energy Manager is connected to over 15,800 facilities, buildings across the state. Then on our Evolve, as you recall, as a board of trustees, you authorized up to $250 million to be spent supporting the electrification of the transport industry. When we step back and think about the CLCPA Act and the desire to get to a carbon-neutral economy by 2050, the emissions that come from the transport industry in New York State are substantial, and so this is NIPA's support in electrifying, as I said, the transport industry. There are a couple of key activities within this. One is supporting the state of the state's objective of having a minimum of 10 electric vehicle charging stations in each REDC or Regional Economic Development Council region. The second is supporting the electrification of the bus transit system, 25% of it in upstate. And so NIPA is both helping build out the public charging infrastructures while supporting our customers in building out their electric vehicle charging infrastructure to electrify the bus systems. In my mind, success for this program is getting these assets into the ground, and so you'll see here, too, there was some level of pause for about And so you'll see here, too, there was some level of pause for about four months relative to COVID. And so we're trying to pick that up again in the second half of the year, but that is why it's yellow. Next slide. And finally, just wanted to share some other key milestones coming out of the com ops group. We're really looking at meeting customers where they are. As I mentioned, we introduced a marketing and product development group. The green power products that comes out of the expanded authority that enables us to offer power to a broader customer base of local governments across the state was the result of this initial product development process that is very rigorous and comprehensive in its inclusion of groups across NIPO. And that should be, is being launched in the second half of the year, and we hope to have some transactions and supporting being the load serving entity for some new customers across the state. And then when we step back and think about the CLCPA, there is a goal of 3 gigawatts of energy storage by 2030 and 6 gigawatts of distributed energy resources or solar by 2025. The other two highlights here are the ways that NIPO is helping support that. One with an owned and operated and developed 20 megawatt storage plant in northern, in the North Country, which you've approved in the past, and that construction has begun. And the other is the largest solar rooftop project to date in New York City at the Jacob Javits Center. And there are many people to kind of thank for their support in all of this. Too, really too many to name, but it spans legal, finance, procurement, utility ops, et cetera. So that's my report. Happy to answer any questions.
Very comprehensive. Thank you very much, Sarah. Any questions for Sarah? All right. Adam, on the financial front, give us your crystal ball or look into your crystal ball.
Yes, good morning, trustees, members of staff and public. Well, the crystal ball is a little, still a little cloudy in these times. I mean, we are still in unprecedented times with a lot of uncertainties ahead of us, not knowing if there'll be a second wave or other disruptions that may impact us going forward. But based on our actual results, which we'll talk about in a second, and forecasting out, we're still going to look at things sort of in a range in terms of worst case, best case. And we've put numbers in to really represent sort of that, the midpoint of that range. The actuals for the first six months, from an EBITDA perspective, because we do look at that, that's really the earnings cash flow in which we can look at in terms of our ability to bond and have capital capacity to meet our capital needs, is down from an original plan by $65 million. As Sarah mentioned in her report, you know, the major drive, there are several major drivers. The one that we've seen since the beginning of the year was in the collapse of the energy prices. And that took place very early on, say, in February, March, as we adjusted our revenue forecast to reflect the new price environment. And since that initial drop, prices have really kind of stayed at that lower level. But just in terms of context, if we were projecting 335 million from the merchant portfolio in March, when we gave our updates, you know, that, that number looked like 290 going forward, again, through the end of the year, which was a $45 million drop just in that part of our revenue margin picture. It's pretty much stayed there since then. So the, the end of the year forecast since that initial drop have pretty much stayed steady. There's been some customer reduction revenue related to also the prices, as well as some of the load. Some of that offset because we've been able to sell some of that excess load into the, into the, into the ISO market to offset that, as well as Sarah mentioned, putting on hedges during the year has continued to reduce some of the downside risk that we see throughout the end of the year. Again, going off what Sarah mentioned before, we do see that the customer load reduction that was originally forecast, which was a much more steep drop, we see that rebounding towards the end of the year, but still being slightly below what original forecasts were. So the net income for the first six months is, in terms of actual, you know, in our financial statements, not forecast, is negative 23 million. And then we use that as the basis of, of making the full year forecast, which is on the next page, which will be, you know, 26 million through the end of the year. But there are some timing factors that, that go into that in terms of why we're seeing not as much of a significant decrease going out forward. In the first six months, we had, as was mentioned at the last meeting and updated for the trustees, the decision on the RTEP charges, the Regional Transmission Enhancement Program associated with the HTP line that runs across the Hudson. This was a decision that went against NIPO. NIPO continues to challenge it. However, given the current status, we've taken a conservative view and we've booked the liability in the first six months, as well as the expense. And then we'll forecast out into the future. So overall, it's about 32.8 million. 26 of that million is reflected in that first six month in numbers of that 23 million net loss. So if you were to take out that extraordinary event, we would have had a $3 million net income for the first six months. Adding that in, we get to 26 million. So now when we look at what happens for the rest of the year, as we see in the forecast of a 26 million net loss for the rest of the year, again, if you were to pull out that extraordinary, extraordinary item, it really would, you know, start to match up the first half to the second half. In the second half of the year for the RTEP, there will only be a $6 million remaining charges. But on the, on the, the good news, if you will, some good news in our financial reporting is that the new transmission rates to take into effect from July 1 this year through July of next year, it will increase by 40 million to the positive of that 20 million we will recognize in 2020 and 20 million we'll recognize in 21. So that goes to help offset that negative RTEP charge. Other things that have affected these sort of income and expense more on a timing related issue, when we paused, the pause has the effect of reducing the amount of allocation we would have to capital from those projects, which is basically a function of how much we're spending on the capital, as well as how much direct labor we're charging to capital projects. So if we're not working on capital projects, we're not charging our expense, our O and M expense to the capital projects. So not having that results in the O and M expense being higher than was budgeted. So that was a variance in the first half of the year. As we move into the second half of the year and we unpause, and we are unpausing sooner than we originally forecast, we took a conservative forecast. So we will see some of those timing differences work their way through the end of the year and start to narrow. We do see other expense reductions between now and the end of the year and some discretionary spending that we've identified that was non-essential to major projects. We will see some under spending in certain areas of, of the, the income statement. And on the other side, there will be some increased costs related to responding to the COVID pandemic. And that will really represent that portion of the, of the extra costs we've incurred, which will not be FEMA reimbursable. So if you recall, a lot of the costs that we've incurred in terms of overtime related to shelter in place or shutting down the plants, in terms of, you know, keeping the workers at the plants during the whole time and not having them go back to their homes, but going back and forth in the shelter in place, those additional costs will be FEMA reimbursable up to 75%. There is a 25% local match. And generally, that represents the portion of additional expense we will see this year, along with some other expenses that may not be reimbursable. So that's a really big change on the expense side. And other than that, as I said before, the 26 net loss we're projecting is a midpoint. We think that could go 30 million either way, to the positive or to the negative, depending on how the events unfold between now and the end of the year, which we really do not have a great ability to give you a certainty around that, particularly with a second wave or, you know, the impact that that could have on our operations going forward. So with that, I would just be happy to entertain any questions as we go forward.
Adam, does your 30 million plus or minus, that's inclusive of variations of what you know? But does it also include some allowance for the unknown? Is there a contingency, if you will, included in that? Or are you just working with trying to create guardrails for what's known and identified at this point?
Well, I would say it's a little bit of both. So reflected in the downside 30 is partially sort of that 15 million potential downside risk that Sarah mentioned from the merchant portfolio on energy prices. And that would be the, you know, the one area where we would be most impacted on the revenue side. And then, you know, the remainder of that negative 30 would be associated with additional costs not currently anticipated with additional pandemic response or pause should that happen between now and the end of the year. So I think between those two items, we should, you know, that should be a, a guardrail against some potential unknowns. So we think that is, you know, sufficient. We also think we're conservative in even how we're looking going forward. On the, on the best case, you know, scenario, it really assumes that revenues stay where they are, potentially upticking slightly, and expenses coming in and narrowing significantly between now and the end of the year. So, you know, I could, you could create a rationale to justify either ends of those bookends that, that could be credible. So it is a, it is a wide gap, and that's why we're sort of putting the number out there in the, in the mid, you know, in the fairway of that, of that gap.
All right. Well, I'm just trying to manage expectations, ours and externally. No one's really providing guidance at this point. And to the extent we are trying to guide the external world, I just want to make sure we've got sufficient disclaimers. As you said, our crystal ball is cloudy and no better than anyone else's. So I just want to ensure we don't over promise and under deliver in terms of our ability to meet some of those targets. So just trying to, you know, understand the, the sense of confidence and otherwise manage expectations. So, okay, any other questions from the board? Sorry, Adam, you were going to say something else?
No, I, I agree with, with your comments and just, just reiterate that we think that, you know, having that kind of range should, should account for some of those uncertainties.
Anything else from anybody for Adam? All right. Terrific. Thank you very much, Joe, Sarah, and Adam. It was kind of like the three bears, you know? One was small, one was lengthy, one was just right, you know? So it was good. Okay.
Was that in that, in that particular order or?
You guys can figure that out in the debrief, you know? Whose porridge was too hot, whose porridge was too cold, and what was just right, you know? Okay. We've got three committee reports. Last week, we had a robust, a couple of robust sessions of both finance and audit. And this morning, ahead of full board, we had a cyber and physical security committee meeting. So coming out of both finance and audit, we've got some actions that require a vote and approval. I'll let Tracy McKibben recap the finance outcomes and recommendations and bring those forward. Tracy.
Great, thanks, Mr. Chairman. It was two weeks ago on July 16th that we had our finance committee meeting where we discussed seven particular items. One in the financial operations area, three in the utility operations area, two in the commercial operations area, and one in the digital transformation area. And so in the, under financial operations, we discuss the assignment and release to one or more of the pre-qualified financial institutions that we, the trustees, had selected at our September 2019 meeting. This releases up to $200 million of loans to be made by the authority to customers in its customer energy efficiency program. And then under the utility operations, there are two items that I'm going to present for a vote today. And one, we will, one item that we discussed at the committee meeting, but we'll defer for a later, a later vote. The two that we are voting on today is the first being a capital expenditures in the amount of 11.8 million dollars to implement the state, state replacement and Plattsburgh Auto Transformer Number One project and to approve a two and a half year contract in the amount of 7.4 million dollars to the Royal SMIT Transformers of a company in the Netherlands. In addition, a recommendation that the trustee approved waiving, actually, that's the other item we'll, we'll defer. And then the second being the capital expenditure in the amount of 14.5 million dollars for the implementation of the Robert Moses Auto Transformer Number Two project. The item that we will, we will defer on is the one that the committee was recommending regarding a 15 year contract in the amount of 12.7 million dollars, which would include a 2.4 million in escalation over the life of the contract to the GE Renewables U.S. LLC. Again, we will defer that for the design and manufacturing and delivery, delivery of the Wicked Gates in support of the next generation Niagara program. And then under commercial operations, the two items are, the first being the acquisition of 37.5% ownership stake in the AC Transmission Project. And the second being the, to execute back to back PPAs with Sun Power and Goldman Sachs Renewable Power and the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey for an estimated annual cost of 857,000 at 851 dollars for, up to a term of 20 years. So the total amount for that will be about 17.1 million dollars. And then the final item that we discussed at our committee that we're sending forward to the full board for approval under is the establishment of a five year master service agreement for energy and environmental analysis, policy development and planning with awards to 13 consulting firms that will be used as part of the, doing this work, that will be, you know, access for doing this work of about 30 million dollars for energy and environmental analysis, again, policy development and planning for the authority. I now send these items to the board for motion to adopt, again, deferring that one item regarding the Wicked Gates. Over to you, Chairman.
Yeah, thank you very much, Tracy. Again, we were all actively involved in the finance committee meeting 10 days or so ago. As Tracy said, we agreed with the further Wicked Gates here, but that does leave us with half a dozen others. I'll take Tracy's recommendation as a motion if I could have a second.
Second.
Thanks very much. If there are less or any other questions, I'd ask all in favor to say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All six items are carried. Thank you very much, Tracy. I'm getting some feedback there, so if someone could help me out, that'd be great.
Yeah, if you could just mute if you're not speaking.
Following finance, we had a great audit committee meeting as well. Trustee Nakandry will report out on our discussions and recommendations there, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On August 6th, or excuse me, on July 16th, the audit committee met and received an internal audit update from Angela Gonzalez. The committee also adopted minutes and approved the The committee also adopted minutes and approved the Audit Committee charters for both NIPA and Canal Corporation, and the internal audit charter in the consent agenda. The committee adopted a motion to recommend to the full board these charters that are now before you for a vote, them being approval of the New York Power Authority Canal Corporation Audit Committee charters, as set forth in Exhibits A and B, and approval of the Power Authority Internal Audit Charter, uh, which is set forth in Exhibit A. Mr. Chairman, I'd move the adoption of those two items.
Thank, thank you very much, uh, Judge. Again, as with finance, we had an ample opportunity to participate in, uh, the Audit Committee meeting, um, hence, I'll take the judge's, uh, recommendation as a motion. I would ask for a second.
Second.
Thanks very much, uh, Tracy, although audio, so I think I need somebody on video. Can I get a second out of Michael or Dennis, please? I know I got them on, on video, but not on audio. You got a second? All right, Mike gave me a second, Michael gave me a second. Thank you very much. Unless there are any other questions, uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, thanks very much, uh, Judge. And then, uh, last but not least, uh, we had a cyber and physical security meeting this morning, efficiently, uh, run by our peer, uh, Mike Balboni, uh, who previously reported out on it, but I'll ask him to do so again. Mike, the floor is yours.
Today, the Security Committee heard from, about NIPA's security posture and response to the COVID. NIPA continues to support the electric sector of, and New York State's integrated response to this new normal. We also discussed a report from the World Economic Forum on cyber resilience in the electricity ecosystem. Included in the report was a NIPA use case that recognizes NIPA's effective oversight of enterprise risk from a cyber perspective, with defined organizational governance and prioritization of a holistic system. NIPA will remain focused on our resilient and secure operations. And then finally, we heard about a new and exciting partnership with Siemens to develop an industrial, secure, cybersecurity center of excellence. Thank you, and there were no votes needed for this, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thanks for the report, Mike, and as we said there, kudos to you for your leadership and Rob, Casey, and the entire, uh, team for enabling us to stand very, very, very tall, uh, during these challenging times. So, uh, very well done, and much appreciate, uh, all of your efforts. All right, we will close with, uh, approval of, uh, consent agenda. Uh, the consent agenda is primarily, uh, or heavily, uh, weighted toward, uh, the power allocations and recharge New York, et cetera. I don't want to give them undue, uh, uh, short shrift here. Keith, um, can you just give us a quick little, uh, drive-by, at least in terms of the impact? We've all had a chance, opportunity to read the specific recommendations, but maybe you could give us a flyover on, uh, the economic impacts of, uh, what we're approving here.
Hi, it's Sarah Saladiam.
Okay, Sarah's gonna do the high back.
Sure. So, no, no worries. Uh, well, our hydro economic development programs are supporting the economic growth and competitiveness of New York State, as you know, and this is ever more important during this COVID pandemic, where we talked a little bit earlier in the session regarding how NIPA was attempting to be responsive. I'm happy to report that we have not slowed down in trying to support the companies and organizations across the state, and so in the consent agenda, you will find 18 companies, uh, that are either receiving low-cost power or other benefits related to NIPA's hydros, and specifically committing to 4,600 jobs either created and/or retained, as well as capital investments north of 360 million dollars. So again, the team has been very active during, during COVID in supporting, uh, the, the companies, uh, that, uh, reside in New York State.
Thank you, and agree, very, very compelling number, so kudos to you, Keith, and, uh, the team for, uh, continuing to enable the success of others, in, uh, particular in these all more trying times. Thank you for the commentary. And unless there's any other questions, I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So.
Uh, I heard a motion and a second in there. Thank Judge and Dennis, uh, uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carried. Terrific. And with that, um, I'm pleased to, uh, bring, uh, unless there's any other matters to come before us, uh, this meeting to a close. Uh, our next regularly scheduled meeting is, uh, September 23rd, uh, when, uh, we look forward to, uh, a continuing positive story on, uh, all the initiatives that, that we're pursuing. And, uh, uh, with that, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, thank you very much, Mike and Dennis, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, motion carried, meeting adjourned. Stay safe, uh, stay well, everyone. Enjoy, uh, the remainder of, uh, a, a warm and beautiful summer in, uh, in and across New York State. Thanks very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.